Commissioners, I'm going to ask you for approval of the agenda. Before I do though, I want to make one change. After the approval of the agenda, Scott Harrelson will be on before the consent agenda. So we'll call the consent agenda 1:00 AM, Scott Harrelson, number one. In this case today, I think he is. So I would ask for approval of the agenda with the change.
Sub move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Scott Harrelson.
Good morning Commissioners. I wanted to come before you this morning to give you an update on the status of coronavirus response here in Craven County and also answer any questions that you may have. So the latest is, we have sent in three tests through the Health Department, three COVID-19 tests. Two came back negative, one came back positive. And when one comes back positive, then begins the contact tracing. And contact tracing basically involves all of the close contacts of the person who was symptomatic. Close contact is basically within six feet for about 10 minutes. For example, if the individual that was symptomatic and tested positive showed up at an event and shook some people's hands that they knew, then that person would be implicated and we would contact them for quarantine. At the onset, the testing does have requirements. Either a positive travel history and symptomatic, and that travel history is being expanded now. Basically, all of Europe is a level three travel destination, just like mainland China was a few weeks ago. And then also lowered the bar a bit on who can be tested. Now, it's basically a negative flu test and symptomatic. Then we can test for coronavirus. And once that occurs, the individuals put in isolation because they're symptomatic. And all of their close contacts, usually family members, are put in quarantine to get them out of the general population. And they stay in that state for 14 days or until a negative test result comes back, which is what happened to two of the three. The other thing that compounds getting that symptomatic is the fact that we have other things that are making people sick and showing these symptoms in the area. It goes to show, two of the three that were tested did test negative for a flu test, but they didn't have coronavirus. So that shows us that there are other upper respiratory illnesses presenting those symptoms in the area. At the last conference that the governor had, I don't know the latest numbers, I haven't checked them this morning yet, had about 32 cases in the state of North Carolina. And all 32 of them could be traced back to travel. And so could ours, our one test. So that's a good sign in that we're not convinced that we have community transmission going on yet in many of our counties. And we want to keep it that way. So now, what we're doing is working with our local medical providers. Because I said, we've sent in three tests. But private providers can also send in tests and send it to a reference lab, like LabCorp. Now, locally, we work pretty well together. And they would notify my communal disease staff if they knew to do so. We've been sending out information to that back, but sometimes we may not always know every test that's been given. And in that instance, a private provider may tell an individual to go in quarantine or isolate and quarantine their close contacts because they were symptomatic. Now, we would be informed of any positive test result. That would be reported to us. So we know for a fact we need to do those. And right now, the private offices and the Health Department have small numbers of tests available, so it's not like we're out of tests. We anticipate getting more. And we're having a meeting this afternoon with some of our medical partners about what we're going to do for more testing and also how to mitigate or cut down the potential cross-contamination of the hospital and any other private offices, as well as the Health Department. What we've done for the Health Department is screen over the phone. If anybody calls in for an appointment, we ask them if they have influenza-like symptoms. And if they do, we still care for them, but we have a different protocol where we make sure to get a mask on and carry them to the particular room that we don't have to trace through. We get them where they're going. We've also tried to implement this for our week line. So we accommodate walk-ins, and we haven't stopped doing that yet. It may be a thing that we need to do in the future, just for the time being. If somebody were to just walk in, which may happen whether we accommodate walk-ins or not, and they present to our staff at registration, then we try to get a mask on as soon as we can and take the necessary precautions. We have plenty of personal protective equipment for our staff on hand. Fortunately, we have a lot of N95s. Not all of our Health Departments and other providers are that fortunate. And we have all of the other necessary implements to try to keep the staff safe. Another thing that we're going to implement too is any of the high-risk populations. We have some staff members that may be considered a high-risk population, which is over 65, really those underlying health concerns. So we will try to lessen the contact or face-to-face time with any of the symptomatic individuals we deal with. If that person has a role in their normal job and we're going to amend their job by the time being, we try to remove them from any area of risk. And when we talk about risk, there's really only a couple of ways you can catch this. It's droplet spread. So try to avoid anybody who is coughing and sneezing because you did have a droplet spread. Contact surfaces. One that I think about is our telephones, our smartphones. That's a surface that you're constantly touching, putting to your face, along with a number of other high-contact or often touched spaces. We're, with the county, disinfecting a lot of the contact surfaces throughout the day. So that's basically a rundown of where we're at right now. We may have, we do have some people in quarantine, all that were close contacts. We may be doing a few more tests today to send them into the state lab and anticipating more tests. Whether or not they'll be rapid tests, I don't know yet. Some say they will be, some others are, the jury's still out on that one. But as soon as I know, I'll let you guys know. Are there any questions?
Any questions, by any of the Commissioners? Mr. Chairman.
Scott, I've encouraged a lot of folks, our citizens that can, to watch this Commissioners' meeting this morning to hear what you've got to say. I think all of us on this board have received a lot of correspondence during the weekend, especially since we have a positive case in Craven County. You said it, but I want you to go back over a little bit more to make sure folks have a better understanding and also that I have a better understanding. And let's say I'm positive for COVID-19. If somebody has had contact with me, you said, for at least 10 minutes and been closer than six feet.
Yes, sir.
Then they're automatically quarantined for 14 days.
Yes, sir. Or, well, if you're positive, yes, they would.
If I'm positive.
Yes, sir.
That's the date that they had contact with me. From that date, is that when it starts with the 14 days?
Yes, sir.
When does it begin to stair-step? And I think that's the concern by some, you know, that they have been related to. They say my child is quarantined because they've had direct contact with me. Well, my child has been around a lot of other folks. What is the process for those other folks?
We're using the ring method. Basically, it's close contacts of the symptomatic, not contacts of the contact.
That's key. And will you say that again, so make sure folks hear that?
Yes, sir. It's not contacts of a contact. It's a ring method. It's those people that came in contact with the symptomatic individual, that first ring method. And I'm glad you brought that up, because that is one thing I did not touch on earlier, the social distancing. You can imagine how this grows exponentially when you have people going to large events. Say you find out your symptomatic person went to a large church service, a festival, a family get-together. Because testing is the tip of the iceberg. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the hard work that our communal disease nurse, Courtney Chinworth, has been doing. She's done a lot of work all through the weekend because she's positive popped up on Saturday. So what that communal disease nurse has to do is track down everybody, because the symptom onset is another thing. We're actually being a, we want to go a little beyond when they were very ill, running a high temp, maybe, you know, at that point, we want to go back a few days earlier when they just weren't feeling well. Because they were symptomatic at that point too, when the nose, when you had the runny nose, when you just didn't feel good. You may not have had 101 temp, but you weren't feeling very well. And we want to go back to that point and draw on those contacts to try to do that ring method and get people quarantined out of the general population and try to stay ahead of this as best we can. But every one of those individuals, for instance, if they're in a restaurant, then you've got to go back to that restaurant and pull cash receipts. You've got to find out what waitstaff, you know, waited on them. And then you've got to try to get to those people as quickly as you can because they were in close contact and they may not have even known. And then you've got to find out where they went. So these are the things that, you know, the CDC staff, and try to get them quarantined or in isolation if they're symptomatic. Symptomatic is isolation. If they're in close contact, it's not symptomatic, it's considered quarantine.
Mr. Chairman.
Will you explain to us the first symptom? You know, I mean, I think you referenced to them, I mean, you don't initially have to have a fever, but, I mean, is it, is it always like the flu-like symptoms that will be? Is it more pneumonia-type symptoms? Is it the onset?
Fever and deep cough are the two main. Because we've had people present to be tested that were not even symptomatic, you know, they just wanted to be tested. But that's not the protocol. Right now, the protocol is you have to have a fever, you have to have a cough, and you have to have a rapid flu test, which will be done on-site at your physician's office or the Health Department. And that's done on-site and it is rapid. Within a few minutes, we'll know whether or not you have seasonal flu, because that's still present as well. If you don't have that, then we'll also test for coronavirus. But right now, that's not rapid. Has to be sent into the state or to one of these reference labs like LabCorp. And it's taking probably three to four days now for us to get the results back on those. So as soon as you get that negative test and you're tested for COVID because you're symptomatic, you and your close contacts will go into isolation tomorrow.
I just wanted to thank you and your staff for what you're doing and what you're going to have to continue to do, because I know it's, it means a lot of work, a lot more hours, and I really do appreciate that. And the other thing I wanted to say was, you know, I've heard people say, "Don't panic." And when you, I had to go to the grocery store yesterday, and I didn't need toilet paper, thank goodness, but anyway. It was, I talked to the lady at the register, she said, "It's been like this all day. This is a Sunday." And it looked like the day before Thanksgiving. I mean, the place was packed. So when people say, "Don't panic," that doesn't do any good. But I think the term that we should use is everyone should try to stay calm and not overreact and not, not let their imagination run wild.
For lack of a better word.
It is serious, it is real, but we need to stay calm.
Yes, sir. And another thing with the social distancing, closing down schools, the travel restrictions, all of these have been, like I mentioned earlier, all 32 cases in the state can be tracked back to travel. Travel is not our friend at the moment. So if everybody could, unless it's just absolutely necessary, if everybody could stay local just until we try to get ahead of this, because our case, travel-related, not intentional, nobody had any, you know, any knowledge that they would bring anything back, but that's what occurs. If you look at the heat map for the Caribbean, just a week or so ago, there was none down there, but those cruise ships bought, those cruise ships bought it there because that's what their economy thrives on. And now, the Caribbean is lit up with cases, just like other parts of the world.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Scott, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Booker said about thanking you and your staff for all the work that's going into this. And that's actually my question. Right now, we've had three possible cases, one positive. I could see the Health Department becoming overwhelmed very quickly if those cases bloom here in Craven County. What are your plans or are you making plans to be able to ramp up staff resources should there be a bloom of cases that is going to require more Health Department focus?
Yes, ma'am. Good question. We have one communal disease nurse on staff, but we've pulled two other nurses to assist her with contact investigation and anything else that she may need assistance with. And we're also, we'll need the help of the local medical community. And this afternoon, a meeting with Dr. May, who sort of represents Carolina East in their practices, and then Dr. Koontz, who's over EMS but also works with CCHC. And then we also keep in the loop with Coastal Pediatrics in East Carolina, Wimison. So the good thing about it is you can talk with a handful of people but reach about every medical practice in this area. So we all need to stay on the same page and we all need to know what the plan is. And the thing about this is, it evolves, it changes every day. The state guidance changes every other day. So we're trying to keep abreast of that. We're having daily calls with the communal disease branch out of Raleigh. We're also getting inundated with a lot of guidance through email, which we're trying to forward on to our medical community. But I think between the staff we have at the Health Department and the medical staff working together, we should be able to pool our resources. And that's what this is about, is trying to really protect those high-risk individuals and not have a run on our local resources at our hospital.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I can see that we need to really ramp up the information that we are receiving here today, make sure that as many people as we can get this information. Just look at that tub, they're not going to get it. You need something on paper. People can read and forget about something, then they can read it over. Make sure we get as much information out we can.
Yes, sir. And I, we have Ms. Amber Parkers, the PIO with the county, and Ms. Amber Tabarini is our Public Information Officer with the Health Department. And we're going to make a concerted effort to try every step of the way to get that out to the community. You're absolutely right, because this is human behavior. This is, that's what's going to quell this and hopefully slow down the contagion rate.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do you have a question for?
No, I was going to make a statement, but you can go.
If I can add one more. I think Commissioner Booker opened the door and Commissioner Mitchell, and I had planned to wait until later on in the meeting, but since the door's been opened and you're here, I want to say that the case that has tested positive in Craven County is a friend of mine, a brother in Christ. And definitely when I was notified about it, you know, definitely have a lot of concern. This individual has been in contact with me through the weekend and this morning, before I came to this meeting, a lot of correspondence. And I just, I'm in awe of his testimony that he has in the midst of this trial of life that he's going through. But I just want to read a statement from him. He says, "I wanted to testify that Dr. Ron Lather, his entire staff at Creekside Primary Care, the management of CCHC, and the Craven County Health Department, represented by Courtney, have responded quickly and purposefully fully to answer questions and to give and gain information in order to stop the further spread of the coronavirus. Thanks so much, Jason, for the Christian life that is translated through your leadership. I appreciate your friendship. Physically and spiritually, I'm doing great. Losing freedom is never fun, but it sure is educational. I thank God for where I am. He has been so good to me. My wife and I are not trying to hide the fact of my positive test, but we are letting people know on a personal level all the facts because we believe people can handle facts better than mystery." And this family has been open about their case. I admire them for taking necessary steps prior to, I think they have tried to isolate themselves.
They have.
And, you know, our community stands behind this family. When you get into a community in which we live in, this individual lives in, you know, everybody knows each other and everybody knows each other's struggles. And so as I've already said, and I'll say it once again, our prayers are with this family during this time. But physically, I think he is doing as, he testifies about as well as you can under these circumstances. And so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And thank you, Harold, for, Scott, for everything that you've done.
Yes, sir.
And your staff.
Thank you.
I think to sum it up, social contact is the biggest thing that we've got to worry about. If you don't have to go into work and you can phone, do that. There's no reason to think tomorrow is Thanksgiving. Go in, if you need a grocery item, get a grocery item and go home. Pretty much, I think that sums up what you're telling people.
Yes, sir. And washing those hands, because you don't want to self-infect. Again, wash the hands.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before Scott leaves, would you like me to continue with the county's actions at this point?
Yes.
So it kind of goes in
Yes.
concurrence with what you just said. So Commissioners, I prepared, and just so you know, I hosted a conference call at 4:30 yesterday with all department heads to update the guidance that we gave them last week. So I'm going to walk you through how we got to that. Obviously, the chairman and I are speaking quite regular. But last week on Thursday, I instituted a Craven County COVID-19 Prepartness and Response Team. We met for the very first time on Friday at 10:00 AM. That response team is made up of various disciplines within Craven County government. It included our law enforcement community, our health community, our social service community, and lots of other departments who support county government as a whole. What I needed as a manager is to hear from the departments what they're dealing with individually. Because before this task force was put together, I was getting 28 different levels of guidance based on who they interact with at a state level, associations they're a part of. So having that group, and I'll tell you, they are some of the brightest minds in county government that we have. Not that all the other departments aren't bright, but this is the group that really is going to be focused on this issue. And I would remind the public, most of the crises that we've dealt with in recent years have been related to inclement weather, whether it be a flood, whether it be hurricane. This is something much different. This is a public health crisis. As Scott said, a lot of what we do isn't putting things back together. It's about prevention, preventing it from happening and how we can educate and how we can stop community spread. One of the things I think Scott alluded to several times is, we don't have community spread in Craven County right now. That doesn't mean it won't happen. That means that the case that's been identified came from travel. As Scott said, that's something we're going to closely monitor, and the things that his staff are doing are to avoid community spread. As we sit here in this room, from what the public can see and what I can see, we are practicing social distancing. A lot of the things I'm going to talk to you about as I go through the recommendations and the decisions I made yesterday with the chair are, we're going to try to do that as much as we can in county government. However, county government is different than any other government. There are things that we do that have to continue. We cannot shut all our doors. That's not what we're built to do. We're built to help people. We're a human service agency. So when I say that, we're the primary care physician for 9,000 people in Craven County. We're going to continue to do that. We're going to do it safe, we're going to use precautions, but we're going to continue our job as public health people. We still provide people services when they're in need. Food stamps, Medicaid, all the types of protective services that we provide through our Social Service Department. We have an obligation by law to maintain those services. We have a sheriff, Sheriff Chip Hughes is here. He and I talked last night late about some of the obligations the sheriff has. They're going to continue to patrol, they're going to continue to answer calls. We have to maintain a jail. The thing we need to do is to make sure we're doing it the right way and safely. So with that said, I'm going to cover some things that we're going to do. For public information, Mr. Sampson brought up some very, Commissioner Sampson brought up some very valid points. Last week, we did, on March 14th, which was Saturday, we released a press release that talked about the details that we're allowed to share with the public about the first positive case confirmation in Craven County. That press release is found on our website and our social media. It has been shared by all our media partners. I mean, it's public information at this point. We talked in there about the most recent guidance that had came from the Department of Health and Human Services, which is part of the CDC portfolio from the federal level. There was new guidance. As Scott said, that guidance changes every two days. There will be another press release that goes out later this afternoon. It'll be press release number four, which Amber has already got a draft of, which will include that new guidance. One thing that came about since the last time I talked to most of you is that now, instead of 100 people, the guidance is 50 people, less than 50 people in a congregation point. So we're shrinking that down again to have less people in a room, less spread, avoid that community-type involvement. On Friday at 4 o'clock, some of the Commissioners and myself participated in a media briefing where we shared, again, the best information at that time that was available. Scott covered the things that have started from day one and will continue today, whatever it takes, which is wash your hands, social distancing, don't touch your face, your nose and your mouth. You know, if you can't wash your hands, use hand sanitizer. I see about 10 bottles in here today, so I think we've all gotten that message. But there's some common sense things that we can do. But most importantly, there was a message in that on Friday that I think still needs to resonate. This is still not a time to panic. It is a time to be prepared. It is a time to do the right thing for your family. It is a time to make smart decisions. And we're going to have to start doing that after today as a county. We're going to have to start doing the things that may be uncomfortable, that may separate us a bit from what we love to do, which is serve the public. But it's the right thing to do to protect our employees and the citizens. So with that said, here are the things that are in effect starting right now. No out-of-county travel for any county employees unless it's absolutely essential. We are not going to leave this county for any conferences, any nice-to-do meetings, anything. There are essential things that have to happen. We still have to transport prisoners between counties. We still have certifications that are required by law that we maintain to provide the services that we do. Those things will be on an as-needed, as-approved basis by the county manager. This runs in effect from today, 3/16, to 3/31, which buys us time to evaluate the situation. As I spoke to the department heads yesterday, if there is an opportunity that I can relieve this sooner, I will. If there's an opportunity that it needs to stay in longer, I will also do that. And this is simply to protect our workforce locally and to protect the citizens that we serve. We are also looking at personal travel of employees. Of course, we cannot tell an employee what to do in their personal life. But if there is travel by an employee of a personal nature, we may subject that person to a 14-day quarantine period once they return. What we're looking for there is not a normal trip in their life to go to the doctor in Greenville. It is a leisure trip to somewhere across the world that they may be exposed to an area that has community spread. If that happens, then they're going to be 14 days at home. We have prohibited, and some of you will hear this, any outside groups from using our county facilities from 3/16 to 3/31. This is any group that does not have a complete majority, 100% makeup, of county employees or affiliated individuals. This is the garden clubs. This is CleanSuite. I'm just giving you some examples to understand. These are outside folks. We don't have travel history on, we don't We don't also want to susceptible them to the people who may work for the county that, you know, we may, we just may not need to have that interaction. Again, it's the social distancing aspect. This, again, 3/16 to 3/31. There are some mandatory type meetings that we'll have to have. We have to continue working on FEMA claims. We have to continue to have internal work groups to work on issues. We will continue to do those in a safe manner, using social distance and conferencing as much as we possibly can. We are continuing every day to encourage our employees to wash their hands, limit their contact, avoid congregation, and practice social distancing. This is more challenging in certain departments. There are some ways that that can't happen in some departments. But for the most part, we are asking each department to provide us with different ideas for their department on how that, these things can take place, particularly when we come to the congregation, social distancing. That information will be provided to Amber and I at noon today. We understand that we have a lot of parents that are employed by Craven County, I mean, by Craven County government, that rely on Craven County schools every day to teach our children so they can learn. We now know that schools will be closed for two weeks. Childcare is an issue, and we are now asking each of our department heads to work with their staff to determine how great an issue that is, and so we can begin looking at alternative methods to help make sure we have continuity of government. We know our employees were prepared for this. Everyone had had some discussion, department heads had with their employees prior to that decision being made. We know alternative plans had to be made. But what we want to ensure here is that there's a continuity of government. We are also, as a part of our plan for employees, we are restricting county employees from any outside meetings with outside groups at this time. Meaning if employees ask to speak at a Rotary Club, an employee is part of a committee for beautification, whatever it is, we're asking them to not attend any of those meetings from 3/16 to 3/31. And those are local Craven County meetings. We will still do the, again, the internal meetings that we have, but no outside groups or meetings from this point forward. Now, let's talk about operation of county government. Effective on 3/16 to 3/31, we are halting all operations at the Craven County Convention Center. This is simply because the governor has stated points of congregation should be limited during this time. Again, we went from 100 to 50 in two days. The convention center does not work if you have to limit it to less than 50 people. The operation will be halted. We are notifying events. The good news on this is most of those events had already walked themselves back anyway. We only had one remaining event in this time, which we're going to talk to and schedule. Everything in the month of April is now tentative. Meaning we're going to make contact with those events. We're going to tell them, as of right now, they're still scheduled. It is subject to change. Please begin making alternative methods, including rescheduling your event in the, you know, in the future, shall we have to continue that halting of operations. Beginning today on 3/16, all organized usage of Craven County parks is canceled for that period of time. We feel strongly that because of some of the other things in our community that are happening, some restrictions, that Craven County parks shall remain open, but we are not going to organize any activities that cause a point of congregation. This includes rentals of any facilities, league play, clubs, organized activities, adult activities like beach volleyball, disc golf. This does not mean that someone cannot take their child to play on the playground. The parks are still open. They're for the public's use. We need things like that at a time like this. So we're going to remain open to that aspect. Effective today, our senior center has halted all operations in all congregation, including congregate meals. We are working an alternative schedule to have a meal pickup or a meal delivery for those individuals who receive that meal. We are also limiting contact with our home-delivered meal group, meaning we're going to try to just go see them one day a week, drop off five meals at one time to limit that contact. As many of you know, our home-delivered meal program is based on volunteers. It's the Meals on Wheels concept. So we need to make sure our volunteers are comfortable with what they're doing, and by limiting that, we're there. I also, to end what we talked about yesterday, have challenged each department with envisioning an environment for some period of time that includes the county being open and the front door being closed. What does that mean for each department? What laws do we need to be considered up? What things do we need to know as we work through this process? That information is due back today at 12:00. Some departments are already self-limiting. I know, speaking with the sheriff last night, he's already having some ideas about things he'll be doing. Each department will provide that, and we will share that with the public once it's put together. We hope this is a short period of time, but as many of you know, that can't be predicted right now. We love serving the public. We'll continue to do everything we can to make sure they're well, answer any questions they have, and provide the vital services that counties provide. With that said, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Is there anybody have any question from the county manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As you talk about childcare, I'm a little bit concerned about the school system and how the number of our teachers are going to accommodate that, you know, to have children. But looking at county government, if you come back and it seems to be a problem, is there anything you think we as board commissioners do, need to do financially to assist these parents and, because there's going to be a cost, apparently an unanticipated cost, to assist them in childcare for the next two weeks? And, you know, we're here and it could be longer, but...
Yes, sir. I don't think, I don't think there's anything financially. I think the issue we're going to run into, Commissioner Jones, is trying to maintain continuity, right? Some people can handle this for a couple of days. The longer it goes, the harder it gets. We have a very dedicated workforce, and a lot of them have already began making those changes. But there'll be times we're going to have to have alternative schedules. And I think the biggest thing the board can have is patience, right? You may get a call that said, "Hey, I'm really trying to look at this permit, and I just can't get anybody to return my call." That's because we're trying to figure out how to maintain the whole operation. So I think more time, more patience. But to answer your question, I don't think there's anything at this time, but I'd like to leave the door open should it arise to come back to the board and have that discussion.
Has any conversation with Dr. Doyle? Has she indicated how the school system is going to handle the same situation with their teachers?
We have been talking. There are some alternative methods. Probably a little early to share right now, but I think there are some things she's thinking about as this thing moves forward. Right now, her focus was meals and educational materials for children these first couple of days, and then we're going to start working into alternative things after that.
Because it is my understanding that all the teachers will be required to report to school. I mean, that was something I don't think that was made, was clarified when the governor made his announcement. But teachers will report to school for a five-day work week as normal, and that's where they will be doing their online training and so forth, you know, for students that are able.
Sure.
And, you know, that, I know we're going in a different direction, but I just, that is a big concern of mine, and I know definitely of the Board of Education. But you take Western Craven County, I mean, you know, a lot of these individuals do not have access to internet. And even further that, even though if it's offered through sites and so forth, a lot of these young folks don't have, they're raised by grandparents who may not know how to get online, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, you know, it creates, for our rural area, it's going to create a very problem, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And maybe not just rural.
Challenge.
A challenge for the whole county.
Yeah.
Yes.
There are a lot of folks out there this morning who didn't have anything else to do who are watching us. But there are, most of the folks out there today are not watching us. I'm wondering, Jack, if you, and maybe, I was not in the loop last week, as you know, but I'm wondering if you've thought about a press conference that would be inviting the TV stations to come in and, once a week, Scott, you, and whoever else you deem necessary, Amber, would address where we are? Because, you know, not everybody reads the Sun Journal, thank goodness. Not everybody can watch us. Not everybody has internet, but most everybody has a television set, and they all can tune in to Channel 12, I guess, or 13, depending on what your cable provider is. And I'm just wondering if you've thought about doing like a weekly during, until not necessary, a weekly press conference?
Yes, sir. We did one on Friday. We did have a, we called it a media briefing on Friday where we did talk about all the guidance that had came forward to this point. We do intend to have additional ones. I'm not sure we have a schedule yet, but we actually spoke with Scott yesterday evening about, yes, doing another one. What we're looking for is to make sure we have, we wait in those point in time when we have new information, the best guidance possible, and then we have that guidance for the longest period of time, which right now is about every other day. So, yes, sir, to answer your question, we do intend to have additional media briefings moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
This is early in the process as we ramp up to deal with this, so I am not asking for an answer to this question now. But I would encourage the county to start looking at how we are going to provide information to our citizens in terms of emergency economic assistance that hopefully will be coming down from declaring a national emergency. But in addition to all of the other issues that are developed with this, this is going to cause severe economic hardship on many of our citizens. Businesses are not going to have customers. Hourly workers are not going, or may not get paid. The banks have not canceled their mortgage requirements. Car loans and rent still has to be paid as well. So going, looking forward in terms of how we are going to assist our citizens, I would encourage county government to make sure that we make that information available to our citizens as it comes out of the federal and state government, because there are going to be a number of people in this county who are going to need it.
Yes, ma'am.
The county manager mentioned the dates of 3/16 to 3/31. These are temporary dates. They could change. The guidelines can change every day. The coronavirus is changing, so we just have to go along with it. And each day is another day, and I'm sure that county manager will be getting out that information to everybody.
Sir, can I make, can I make one final comment?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I wrapped up too quick. I think the thing, and I would encourage the county commissioners to share this as much as possible. At this point, from 3/16 to 3/31, if the general public can bear with us and try to limit their contact with county as much as they can, again, not because we don't want to see them, not because we don't want to serve them, but just to protect the workforce, to make sure we have continuity of government and to keep everyone healthy, we would appreciate it. There are certain things we can't close down, but the more our public distances themselves from them, from the basic mundane things, call, email, check our frequently asked questions on our website, there's a lot of information there. Use those things first and use in-person as a last resort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I personally would like to thank the county staff who have really been working many, many hours to put this all together. They really have done a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which consists of the minutes of March 2nd, tax releases and refunds, child abuse prevention, month proclamation, and 8/11 Safe Digging Month proclamation. We'll have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next is the Department Matters Tax Resolution to postpone 2021 reevaluation run entry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It was a little less than one year ago that this board adopted a resolution to delay by one year the 2020 revaluation. Little did we know that a little less than a year later, circumstances have occurred to require that I present a similar request to delay the revaluation by two years, this time until 2023. And all of the reasons for that have been enumerated in the agenda narrative, but I do want to highlight two major reasons I'm making this request and recommendation to the board again. We none knew last year this time that we'd still be dealing with the effects of Hurricane Florence in 2018. The damage that resulted from that has been an ongoing effort of our department to review, and we're not sure when that review will end. There are many properties that have been looked at, but there are yet many more to go. In addition to that, the county has undertaken a revision, replacement of the tax software. Two of the three modules of that are in place. However, the third part of it, which is the real estate appraisal part, is about two months in delay, and it, in hindsight, it was a more ambitious rollout than we anticipated. And for these and the, all the other reasons that I mentioned in the narrative, I recommend that the board consider adopting this resolution, which Mr. Grady, the county attorney, has prepared for your consideration. Mr. Jones and I are here to answer any questions you may have about it.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Commissioner Liner.
Sir, I find, you know, I understand the issues, understand the problems you're having, but we did it for one year. I would like to see us bring this back again in 2022, if you don't think you're prepared to go for it. But to put this out for an additional, actually, three years from now, I think we're going to hurt ourselves not knowing where we're at. If you're saying you can't be prepared until 2023, then we got more issues and more problems than what you're talking about here, I feel. Now, I know this virus is going to affect us, and we're going to have some outcome on this, but 2023, putting it out there, starting the reval in 2023, I'd like to see it pushed to 2022. And in sometime in 2021, the summer of 2021, if we're still in the same shape, our economy hasn't come back, then we need that. But to obligate ourselves right now to 2023, I think it's wrong.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, won't this put us, county manager, if we go to 2023, it put us back on the same schedule that we're on currently?
It'll allow us to get back on our, Commissioner Jones, so but going the extra two years allows us to get back on the schedule the next time we do it, which this board, I believe, has said every four years, Ron, is that correct?
That's right.
So then we'll be able to sequence it in a manner that works best for the county staff at that point.
Well, let's go back over. We were at eight years revow, and then it changed to six.
Six years.
And then it was the desire to go to four after that.
Right.
So we've been on, the last revow was the six year.
You've completed the six.
So if we wait to 2023, that would put us at six years again.
Six years.
Seven years.
Seven years. Because you're at five now because you delayed a year, and then this additional two years. And to answer Commissioner Liner's point, point taken, we could reevaluate it. But when Mr. Jones and Mr. Andrew were talking, based on the progress we've had from Hurricane Florence and the recovery in the community, that was our recommendation. If you want to do one where everything should be recovered, it would be two years. I mean, Mr. Jones, I don't know if you feel like sharing, but you shared a number with me in our discussion, I believe it was 1,600 homes that were, you were still visiting outside the normal appraisal process for flood recovery.
That is correct.
Which is still a rather large number. Are we approaching roughly 18 months out? I mean, in the ballpark there, 16, 18 months out?
We've, would you like me to step up there? As you recall, when the storm hit, we had roughly around the city of New Bern and Craven County, the appraisal staff did damage assessment for Craven County. We had about 4,620 original properties that were catalogued as being damaged. We had about 4,620 original properties that were catalogued as being damaged. We mailed out notices. We heard back from around 2,740 of those individuals. We've been working those properties, and with the help from the commissioners and management, we've secured some part-time help to even help us further review these properties. Around Wednesday of last week, we mailed out 3,074 value change notices. We're still doing our working our building permits and everything the appraisal staff or appraisal department normally does, and this is all on top of that. As we were talking, we're reviewing sales data. I wish we had a little better sales data. We're seeing a lot of these houses that were damaged, that are flipped, and, you know, and 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 things don't look that bad. It's just a it's just very, a lot of time and no little time, if you will, meaning a lot of work, no little time, or very little time. Reviewing these properties, what we're hitting out in the field is when we have an appraiser go to a site, there may be a neighbor that didn't know, and we certainly put it out there, but they may still be suffering damage with their property. So then we have another one to add to the pile, if you will. I do wish our sales, the sales that we're getting in, I wish we had a little better sales. We have in certain good sales in certain areas, not so good sales in other areas. So it's just going to complicate things, and I believe if we if we put it out a little bit, we get a little better information coming to our office regarding exactly what's going on in the marketplace.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liner.
Sir, I hear you, but it pretty much put us stagnant on a group of people down in my area that we said we were going to take a look at at our next revow in us Carolina Pines when it golf course. We told them, you know, you don't really lose that much, maybe $5,000, $7,000 on that property because it's no longer a golf course community, and we would take a look at and adjust that during the next eval. Now we're putting those people off for three more years who still are having the same trouble you are because they're valued at this level, and people say, we're not going to pay that because you're not a golf course community and everything else. So that's what, you know, everybody is hurting. But now we're looking at the Florence.
Yeah.
But the economic development is is.
Right. Can I answer? I want to let me take that one, because I think individual situations like that, there there's a lot of them now after Hurricane Florence, right? I mean, we've seen, I think as Glenn pointed out, you've gotten certain areas in the county where you have, we don't mind if the sales low or high, we just don't want the sales that don't make any sense to the market, right? You have a flood damaged home that sold for $25,000 with a home and a lot that was selling for $250,000 before. We've got to try to, that's that's just an anomaly, basically. So we need to get those out so it doesn't skew the rest. But I think to your point, Glenn, one thing you shared with me that made me feel extremely more comfortable was our sales ratio, right?
Right.
Which is the state definition of how good a job our last appraisal still meets the market today. And I believe you told me it was 95 points, some point four percent, which basically one is perfect, and then, you know, five on either side is pretty much in the boundary of looking looking good. 95, let's, I think, Glenn, you shared with me in 2010, when we did that reevaluation, our sales ratio was about 68%?
Yeah, somewhere around there. I don't remember.
So that that can show you why that one was a little different. 95, I think, still in the in a good margin.
In a good margin. And to to speak about what Commissioner Liner spoke about was when we did the last reevaluation, that golf course was closed. So we it was not operating in 2016. We were we were tracking the sales from that, believe it or not, and and one of my appraisal staff, we would always talk about it, meaning what 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 difference it was making in the marketplace. And at that time, it made a difference of around $5,000 per home.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
No.
Commissioner McCabe?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Sampson?
No.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Carrie.
No, if fail.
What was the vote?
So the options are, we can start the revow now, which is going to put staff in a difficult position to get it done this year, or we can come back and you can set it for a one year to be looked at again next year.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to modify this resolution and make it a one year as so that instead of waiting two, that we wait for one?
Are you making a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second on her motion? Do we have to go back on the other motion?
No, if fail.
Okay.
It's clear.
We have a second? No second. I, at this point, feel that it's important that the commissioners realize that the county has gone through a year where we had a hurricane that kind of really put the county back. And at this point, right now, we're in a situation where we don't know what this year is going to show. If you don't want a one year, is there any other explanation from somebody that would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. We move it to July of 2021, rethink it, have them bring back the proposal, just like we did when we set it for a year to the days, we set it for a year, take it for a year and a half, and bring it back in 2021 in July.
We got to be careful because there is actually some law about when the notices and things have to go out. So it's it's sort of it's one-year increments, basically, because the way we have to do the process, provide the notification, Mr. Antry, and then the way it has to be billed, there's a distinct schedule that's built in state law. So it's can't be half-years, it has to be whole. So it's basically on schedule, I mean, we're going to start right now, one-year decline or one-year postponement or a two-year postponement. But we have to, if we're going this year, we've got to start right now, so we'd have to make that decision today, which is what the decision that's already on the table, so you wouldn't have to do anything. If you want to delay it by one year, we also need to know today because then we have to either ramp down or ramp up based on your decision.
But one year doesn't give you enough time because that only gives you six months to get you ready. You've got to have announcements out in six months, right?
I do not follow you, sir.
All right, you say one year.
So so let me walk you through. So if we say we're on the same schedule now, Mr. Jones and his staff will be building the schedule of values and preparing their staff to go out to do the reevaluation. I mean, they would start appraising things, they'd get their schedules built. In August, September, we would come in and have a work session with the board to go over the schedule of values with you for it to authorize those. From that point that they're authorized by the board, Ronny, we would prepare the new valuation and send that out in February to all the property owners in Craven County with their new value, which then would open up the Board of Equalization and Review where if you have a question about your value, you would petition it to that group, which would then finish their work by August, and your new tax bill would go out in September. So that's how that would work. So basically, you're a year and a half out from right now to the point that the new tax bill with the new values would go out.
All right, based on that assumption, and I'll second Commissioner Mitchell's for one year timeframe.
All right.
Is that still on the table?
Well, it had to be restated.
Has to be restated by.
Okay, I'd like to restate my motion that we extend this for one year.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker?
No.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
No.
And Chairman Mark?
No. Come on back where we were.
Well, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
I think, you know, I think we've created a big problem for staff going forward. I think the Board of Commissioners need to realize that. I think one of the things that they've tried to address to us is that with the new software, that's one of the biggest challenges that they have in trying to implement a revow. If you're going to go this route, Jack, you know, should they use the old method instead of using the new software? I mean, you know, I think we totally ignored as a board what they've tried to tell us and their problem is, and I think we've got to take that into consideration. I don't necessarily think you maybe have to make a decision right today on that, but I think we need to be mindful, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, that was a factor in this, and the board ignored that, so.
Yes, sir. We'll we'll go back and reevaluate. I'll meet with Mr. Antry and Mr. Jones, and we'll we'll make a determination, the path we need. But like you said, I don't think that's a decision for today, but we'll certainly pick that path moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Planning subdivision for approval. Don Bumgardner.
Good morning. We have two subdivisions for your consideration this morning. The first, again, the planning board was the one that met and recommended both of these projects. The first one is called Lindwood Highlands Phase 7, being considered for final approval. It's property that's owned by Bill Clark Homes of Greenville and engineered by Thomas Engineering. Property is located in Township 7 off of Palisades Way. Subdivision contains 25 lots on 7.87 acres. Each of the lots are proposed to be served by County Water and the City of New Bern Sewer.
Yes.
Vote to approve, the subdivision is needed.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Set it.
All in favor, say aye. A discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
The next subdivision being requested today is called Forest Oaks, Section 1B. The property is owned by Hilldale Properties Homesites, excuse me, and surveyed by an engineered, surveyed by Josh Nobles and engineered by Thomas Engineering. It's located in Township 1 off of Highway 17 North up in the Ernole area. The subdivision contains 47 lots on approximately 27.67 acres. Again, each of the lots are going to be served by County Water and in this instance, by individual septic systems. A vote to approve this subdivision is needed as well.
So moved.
Do we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You said 47 lots on how many acres?
47 lots on 27.67 acres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We had 47 and 27, that'll certainly help with the reevaluation. I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Department Matters Soil and Water Emergency Watershed. Patrick Baker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. As you guys are aware, Craven County has been notified by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the North Carolina Natural Resources Conservation Service that funds are available and have been approved for the county to begin work on Hurricane Florence Emergency Watershed Protection Program sites. As you remember, Craven County has already performed one EWP site improvement at the Mills property in Stately Pine subdivision. The amount received total for this program is $4,3,609. These funds will be used to perform recovery measures at eight different areas, which is what we're calling project areas, in 42 individual property sites along the Neuse River. And there is actually one, what we're calling inland site, up in the Fort Barnble area. If these improvements are left undone, then future damages may occur to life and/or property. And in order to move forward with this program, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the the attached budget amendment and ordinance.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda are appointments. Appointments will be effective immediately unless otherwise specified. Pending appointments. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, five vacancies. You know, I spoke about this at the last meeting. I spent about on Friday, not Friday, Saturday morning, I spent about an hour making several phone calls to see if I can get some people for this particular board. This is really an important board. It's where people go in and make sure that the patients that are in these adult care advisory, on boards, rather, are being taken care of. And I would ask that each commissioner maybe spend an hour of their day making some phone calls and seeing if they could get some of these vacancies filled. Nursing Home Advisory Committee is three vacancies. That is, I believe we have one going on there today. Senior Legislative Tar Heel, Alternate Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Craven Community Child Protection Team vacancy, and Craven County Clean Sweep Committee vacancy. Current appointments. We have an appointment, Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, Bill Smith wishes to be reappointed.
Mr. Chair, I'll nominate him, please.
Okay. We'll appoint him. Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Glenn Terrill has submitted an application, shown on 5B, seeking reappointment to the nursing home, seeking appointment to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. I'll appoint him. Upcoming appointments, Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and Craving Aging Planning Board. Attorney's report. Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I have one item for your consideration. This is the sale of a parcel the county acquired with the city of New Bern through a tax foreclosure. The board's already seen this parcel. It's 2203 Chestnut Avenue. We approved an initial bid of $375. I guess it's a really popular tract because we got an upset bid in the amount of $450. That is the last and highest bid. There are no further upset bids. You know, this is a very, very small lot, is probably not buildable, and my guess is a neighbor is acquiring this just to make his or your yard bigger, so that explains the low value and the low bids. But we are ready to finalize it and sign and deliver the deed with the board's approval so we can get it back on the tax rolls for what it's worth.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? I'm sorry. Good, we have it there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
County manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have two brief things since I was rather long-winded earlier. I would like to introduce our new IT director, Steve, if you'll stand, please. His name is Steve Bennett. Steve started work last Monday. I told him he couldn't have picked a better week to start work. He was quite busy in various meetings that the county had, but Steve comes to us with a lot of experience. Most recently, he was the IT director in Burke County, which is up near the foothills mountain area of our state. He also began his career here in the city of New Bern, working with their staff. He's originally from Pamlico County, and Steve-
He's originally from Pamlico County, and Steve, big welcome to you. We're happy to have you here.
Thank you. Steve, welcome. Commissioners reports. Commissioner Booker?
Just one, just one item. About ten days ago, I attended a meeting of the Hunter's Ridge Homeowners Association, and at that meeting, the U.S. Seventy Jane City Project Director was there to give everybody their latest update, and I was encouraged that the dates he gave us, and I won't give you specific dates, but some, he did say that he expected construction to actually begin in two thousand and twenty-one. And initially, I was told, at least I believe I was told, that it was gonna be about a five-year project. He's now stating that they expected, contractor is expecting to do this project in three years, which is really good news, so the disruption would be, would be minimized. Some other really neat things about this project, they're gonna take out lights and put in roundabouts and...
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts. And I thought it was interesting, he said where they have done this, they've found much reduced amounts of, where they've taken lights out and built roundabouts, they've found a huge reduction in accidents, and those accidents that, that do occur are much, much less severe because people have slowed down and are going around that roundabout, and as a result, they, they don't have these severe accidents that occur when somebody runs a light and gets broadsided. So that does make sense. So I was just overall encouraged by where they're at, and this afternoon I've got a meeting, I assume it's still on, with the DOT people to, to get a further update, so I'll, I'll have something on that the next meeting.
Did they give you a date when they were gonna do this?
I'm sorry?
Did they give you a date on these roundabouts when they were gonna do them?
No, not specific.
I'm glad to hear that because Commissioner Jones and I are waiting for a roundabout that goes back three years ago.
They would be done as part of the Seventy project, obviously, but I just thought, I'd also mention one other thing, I unfortunately last week had to travel on family business, and I happened to have breakfast on Friday with my cousin who used to be the city manager of Carmel, Indiana, and if you know anything about Carmel, Indiana, it's a suburb of Indianapolis, probably the most affluent suburb in the state, and it has grown from a little sleepy burg to a hundred-and-ten-thousand people. That town now has a hundred-and-ten roundabouts. They've gone aggressively about removing all of the traffic lights possible and replacing the roundabouts, and he said the result has been, number one, people move too faster, it's much less, again, the same thing about accidents, the accidents that do occur are much less, and he said the city has just really welcomed this project with, with open arms, and I experienced some of them as I was driving around that town, and it, it's really neat how, how they've made it work. So I just thought that was interesting and hopefully we'll see some more of that in the future.
It is interesting, and I hope so that we see it in the future, too.
Hope you get the ones that's approved, right?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair, I attended the Board of Education meeting at New Bern High School on the fifth of March where they were presenting the results of the school facility evaluation to the, the general public and also seeking inputs from parents and community members. And about seventy-five to eighty people showed up there. I was very encouraged at the level of community response. Obviously, we're waiting back from the, to hear from the Board of Education over where they go from here now, but I like seeing that so many parents and community members are so focused on the state of our school system. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Liner?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McCabe?
District Attorney Board, I'd like to hold my, I'll report until the next meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Sampson?
Yes, I, I was out, out in the J.T. Ball, the school ball. I went about two weeks ago to a play they were having. It was a pretty good little crowd out there, and I was surprised I hadn't been out there so long, looked like a, a microphone that they were trying to use and the speaker, you couldn't hardly hear anything from the kids that was up there in the play. Now, I had intended to say something about that a little earlier, that someone could go out there and check it out, because those little kids were really playing their heart out, but it was a pretty good crowd and you couldn't hardly hear what was going on. Also, I heard a teacher say that, that they had moved up from the low mark they had in the beginning, and they were doing fine out there now, but I haven't had time to look into that yet. That everybody that was involved was mighty happy that they had moved up, they hadn't been in the low mark, but they had moved up quite a bit. And al, also, I, I just, I'm very concerned about our schools, we really, I know we're having all these problems in the school system, and need a lot of repair work done to it. But one thing that I can see, I can see people even coming closer together now since this disease has come to light. I see we are working together, and I remember when I was the chairman of the board about, already about ten or fifteen years ago, that we used to have meetings with all the municipalities that was in our county, and we, once, once a year we would have a meeting together and let each other know what was going on, and I'm so glad that we decided that we need to be together to get this problem that we have now taken care of, and the closer people are together, the better off we works together and better off things go, so I think this is a great opportunity to stay together, that we can be able to use each other's ideas, because I found a long time ago, everybody don't have all the sense and all ideas, and even the child can teach something sometimes, so I'm, I'm pretty enthused, to be able to get closer and closer together. And I know that we have a lot of senior citizens in our community, and I, I heard the news that, that this virus is attacking the older people. The ones that I heard about wasn't too old, and the ones that I heard that died wasn't real old, so I'm not worried about it myself, I know I'm pretty good age, and I'm not worried about that neither, because I know I have a better place to go to when I leave here, but I'm just glad to see people coming together and working together and worried about each other, and I'm just hoping that we can get on board that the whole country begin to do these things together, because I know great things can be done in a country, a town, a city, a county, working together, we can get things done, and don't take that much money to get it done, because everybody is working to help one another. I'm thankful that that storm brought us together somewhat, and I think this, this virus is bringing together even closer. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to stress one more time to our citizens on our county website, we have a lot of information there for you pertaining to the coronavirus. It is being updated daily, as our county manager stated. State of North Carolina has a hotline for the coronavirus. If you have questions or concerns that you want answered, you can call this number, one-eight-six-six-four-six-two-three-eight-two-one. Say it one more time, one-eight-six-six-four-six-two-three-eight-two-one. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The only thing I have is, County Manager and I attended a meeting in Jacksonville, Dixon Crisis Center. We will have a continuation of that meeting next month, maybe. I just want to thank everyone, Commissioners, the Sheriff's Department, and the staff for the cooperation that they have given us during this coronavirus crisis, and hopefully people will listen to what the federal government, what their state government, and what their local government has told them to do to try and overcome this. Thank you. Next on, we have a closed session. Board will request to enter into a closed session pursuant to NCGS one-four-three-three-eighteen. Before we go into closed session, let's take a five-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, the closed session will actually also be in this room to maintain the social distance.
I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.